Call to order the regular meeting video as well from our commission chambers for Thursday, January 27, 2022. We'll start with an invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. We have come today on this cold January afternoon, and we give thanks for the opportunity to serve our city, Ashland, Kentucky. Today we assemble here on this platform, and we stand united as we work together, hand in hand, to make the right decisions for our city and for the people that live and work here. Bless us with divine discernment and wisdom in the decisions that we make today. Bless our city manager and our staff, our employees, that work tirelessly for the best interest of our city. Most importantly, bless our citizens that we serve and the people today in our viewing audience. We pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to receive and file the call letter and agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings and reports, commissioners?
Well, the only thing I have really is to announce that Ashland in motion has set a date for gravy bowl.
Awesome.
Which is April 2nd, and it's at the New Union on Greenup. And we want to thank Chris Pullum, who's on that committee.
Carter.
I mean, I'm sorry, Carter, Carter Avenue. I'm sorry, 2020 Carter Avenue. Thanks to Billy and Christie Bear, who purchased that. And we now have a great venue in Ashland, and so we're going to be, I think, the first ones in there to get a lot of people down to take a look at it and come out for gravy bowl. I'll tell you, there's a lot of good gravy cooks in this town, and it's just a great thing to do. So it's highly anticipated, and I hope everybody shows up.
Great.
I don't have anything.
Did nothing?
I just want to echo that. And first of all, I want to just call your attention to the men that are working on 12th Street. And I want to really thank, give thanks for our water department that are out in the cold today, and they work tirelessly to fix our lines that are broken. And this is a bad time because when the weather fluctuates, it goes from ice cold to, and then fluctuate, we have a tendency to have some broken lines. So I'm thankful for them today. I want to recognize a few of our citizens, and I just want to echo Billy and Christie Bear and their investment in this city. And, you know, with two bear arms locations, and then just recently acquiring 2020 Carter Avenue, we went down and looked at the place, and I mean, it's really nice. And at the end of the day, you don't have six investments here in this city.
Bombshells.
And so with bombshells and with the acquisition of Blazers and so forth. And so I'm thankful for them. I'm also thankful for Allison Christie and the Sky Tower. I always had a place to eat breakfast, okay? There's 14 places to eat breakfast between Russell and Catlicksburg. And I counted.
How many? Fourteen?
Fourteen.
Okay, fourteen.
Fourteen places.
Got it.
But one of my favorites is Sky 37.
It's great.
And they've got great coffee and great breakfast. And so I was down there today, and Jason and Karma Crumb have made a significant investment down there in the Sky Tower, and they're good citizens. Along with the meal and the hotel, there's plenty of good places to eat. Last but not least, I want to shout out the Ashland Tomcats. If we ran the city like the Tomcats play ball, it would be fantastic. They're talented, unselfish, reverent, just good citizen kids. And me and Joshua at the game the other day, I saw him over there sitting, but they don't care who gets the credit. And they just want to succeed. And I want to shout out and thank you, I'm thankful for their coach and that team especially. And they play this Saturday, they play Covenant Catholic at home at 6 o'clock. So I want to invite everybody out. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah, they are something else to watch, especially if you have little kids and that play. You definitely need to watch that team. Bill and Christie Bear, like Commissioner Goot mentioned, one thing we talked to them about, I think that all of us are interested in is, especially for business owners like them who are investing multiple businesses, how's the process going? How do you feel like you've been treated? And, you know, they were glowing. They told us, you know, the staff had followed up with them, sent them an email with the information they need, and that's what we like to hear. But our staff always does a good job, we know that. But sometimes it's nice, and what they said, it's nice just to have a follow-up. And that's, I think that we can help with that sometimes, and that's a good thing to hear. So I know we all care about that a lot, and we appreciate them. And thank you to the city staff. We had the beloved community blood drive Tuesday and had over 40 people for that, so had a very, very good turnout for that blood drive. And while I was there, I noticed our city employees that work at the train, the train station, bus station, and they do a fantastic job. And it's every event that happens down there, we're down there throughout the year for lots of different events. And the employees, obviously the drivers and the staff there, but also the employees that work and help set up things. And some of them even jumped in and donated blood. So we appreciated that. So we thank them very much.
One more thing, Mayor. There's 13 properties on our bladed property list on this agenda. And so I'm thankful for community and economic development and the aggressiveness of this commission as we go after those bladed properties. Also, the biggie, of course, on this agenda is the demolition of the Ashland Oil Building. And so I'm thankful today that we're at this point.
I can't wait to watch it. Got to have a party.
I too want to commend our city staff. I specifically want to call out the streets department for the work they've done during the snowstorms. And I got to see firsthand just how talented they are and their efforts 24 hours a day during the snowstorm was really impressive. I also want to take this opportunity, you know, we have a lot of talk in the community about working together and between the different governments. And we had two small plow trucks go down, and Boyd County Emergency Management reached out to the city of Catlicksburg. And city of Catlicksburg came to our rescue, if you will, and brought their, one of their plow trucks into city limits to help plow our streets. So I want to commend Mayor Day and the Catlicksburg Council for their commitment to being a partner with us as we are with them. We work together as governments, much more so than I think people think. And we can't be successful in this region without everybody working together. So I'm so thankful for them. Also, citizens deserve recognition too when we hear good things about them. And Trey Whitehead has gone out into the community during the snowstorm and was shoveling city sidewalks for businesses and also residences. So I personally want to thank Trey for being a good person. You know, he's a citizen ambassador, and he's the best of our community. And I just want to take this opportunity to highlight him. And I know there's others out there. And I really look forward to hearing those stories moving forward. I'm contemplating creating a citizen ambassador nomination for our city.
That'd be great.
So that
Great idea.
We can have those folks out in the community, championing our city and all we're doing. With that, we'll start with the city manager.
Can I say one other thing?
Oh, okay.
I totally forgot. The Jewel Art Gallery and Airbnb is opening tomorrow. The grand opening is from 10:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Beautiful art gallery. Check it out, right downtown Ashland, right next to Fat Patty's on 15th Street.
Mr. Mayor, I think we should also give a shout out to our sanitation department.
Oh, yeah.
Who does a yeoman's job out there in that snow and dragging things around when it's cold. And so we appreciate them and wish them all to be safe.
All right. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to highlight one of the thing that Commissioner Goot had pointed out, that that was great work by the water distribution folks on 12th Street. A lot, what a lot of people don't know is that they were simultaneously working two other jobs, one on 29th and one on Robin Lynn, which really stretched them. But again, did that just, I don't want to say effortlessly, but they make it look effortless at times with their skill set. I did want to point out, I had just three topics to discuss and bring to your attention. Number one, the reason we are having this type of meeting day, this type of called meeting closed, is because the COVID numbers that are running rampant in the city, the community, and also on the city staff. Our current status is that we have 96 positive cases of 196 total exposures, 42 positive cases this January, 16 employees are currently out positive, and three employees are currently out due to family exposure. Again, just to compare this to the previous time sets from March 20 to January 21, there's a total of 39 positive cases. And as I mentioned a minute ago, we have a total of 91 at this point. So we're getting close to tripling that in the August to January 22 timeframe. And also across Boyd County, the highest previous reported, highest rate was 121, and the most recent seven-day average rate is 327. So this is, this is a very real thing, obviously, and taking the right precautions. So I appreciate you all supporting the called meeting. We, if the trend goes as it is nationally, this should drop. That's what's happening in the Northeast. That's what, that's what we're expecting internally in our discussions with the health department. But if not, we'll look at other precautions to take. One thing, the next topic I wanted to mention is that we had a really nice reflection of everything that happened in 2021. One of the things that was inadvertently left out of the report was meter services. The information was turned in, we just missed it. So I wanted to point out a great job Shane Cook is doing. Just a couple of statistics, last year, we have 14,297 residents that have their meters read every month. About 11,000 of those are done by radio, 3,000 are done by collectors. They had 11,000 service orders last year, 347 exchanged meters, and 285 renewed services. So again, just a data point, it kind of puts into context the amount of work that they do. And then one last thing, I know Mr. Colby House is with us today. Appreciate him doing the article about, as Commissioner Goot mentioned, the old Ashland Oil Building. There was one, one note in the article that they've already updated on their website, and they're going to send out a correction tomorrow, but it's in regards to the vibration monitoring near the 14th Street and the church over there, to make sure that it doesn't affect the foundations there. They accidentally put does, and I didn't want anybody to misrepresent or misunderstand that. Mayor Commissioners, unless you have any questions for me, I'll be followed by Mr. Workman and the presentation of the 2020-2021 audit.
I'd like to wish everyone a good afternoon, I guess, at this point. I was going to say good morning. But I was the engagement partner on the audit again this year, and I wanted to, before I start going over the report, just want to say I appreciate you having us back out again this year, and appreciate the finance department and everybody's help within the city to get the, actually get the audit completed. So if everyone has their book in front of them, in front of them, the audit report, believe it or not, I think we actually added a couple more pages to it this year, as compared to last year. I will go through and hit some of the high points. If at any point in time you want to ask a question, feel free to interrupt me, and I'll go that, go that route. So if you flip over about three pages in, four pages in, I guess this is the first page, this is actually our independent auditor's report. It states we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the city, and that management is responsible for these statements, and it's our responsibility to express an opinion based on our audit procedures. And at the bottom of the page, it has our opinion. It states, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the city as of June 30, 2021." So it is considered a clean audit opinion or an unmodified audit opinion. Starting on page three is the management's discussion and analysis. This section is prepared by the finance department. It provides nice financial highlights and a detailed analysis of the city's financial position and the activity during the year. I do recommend reading this when you have time, because it does provide a good overview of the activity for the year. Our responsibility for this is to make sure it does not disagree with any of the information within the actual financial statements and the footnotes themselves. On page, I think it's page 17 and 18, I'll start with our first statement. Start on page 18, this is a statement of net position, which is essentially the balance sheet for the city as of June 30. At the end of the year, the last line would say the city had a total net position of $49 million. This combines all the city's funds, the general fund along with mostly the utility fund and the bus system, all funds are included in here. Couple of the high points on this statement, about midway through the liability section, you can see the net OPEB liabilities and the net pension liabilities of the city. Altogether, it's about $82 million, almost 83 million. This is mostly the county retirement systems, but it also includes the utility pension fund and the police and fire pension fund. The policing, of those two, I believe, is about 7.4 million for those two pension funds that are a direct obligation of the city. The county retirement rates, as you probably are aware, they will increase for this, this year that you're currently in fiscal year 22, and they're actually going to increase again next year, which I believe for next year, the hazardous is going up to almost 50% of the rates. The pension issues, of course, across the state are still a hot topic. And they actually, they did freeze those rates for the past two years as a response to COVID to help, to help cities out. The other major item on here is the city's debt. Between the revenue improvement bonds, general obligation bonds, altogether is about $40 million. That was an increase of 20 million during the year because of two bond issues. One at the beginning of the fiscal year and one right at the end. I think it's kind of crossed over between years. It was approved in June, and the sale happened at the end of June, but proceeds weren't actually received right until, until first few days of July of 2021. The statement that may interest you most is on page 22. This is the statement of revenues and expenditures for the governmental funds of the city. This represents basically about how you budget the city for the year. At the end of the year, the general fund had an increase, three lines of net change in fund balances of almost $17 million as compared to last year. And there's about three or four main reasons for this. One is mostly that bond proceeds that I mentioned that were received, about $9 million, had to do with the bond proceeds that were issued right at the end of the year that are going to be spent, that were to be spent in this fiscal year. Two and a half million had to do with that. If you recall, last year, the property tax bills went out late for fiscal year 20. So they're essentially two years' worth of property tax collections during fiscal year 21. That was about two and a half million of it. And then occupational business license fees were actually up over a million dollars as well. That were more than, over the prior year, more than what was originally expected to.
How much were those up?
I think it was over a million three over last year, and it was even more over what was budgeted. I think compared to the budget, it was about $3 million, I believe, what was actually budgeted for the year. A couple of smaller items that helped as well, there were 605,000 received in the COVID relief funds for police and fire. And then the bus system, you had less of a transfer to the bus system during the year because the new grant under the CARES Act did not require a city match. So that, that gets you about to your 17 billion dollars there. The tax increment finance fund had a decrease of, the next column over had a decrease of about 200,000. Total revenue spread were almost $100,000, up about 30%. I think the previous year, that was 70,000 for the tax increment fund. The new fund here, you will see, is over on the far right, third column from the right, other special revenue, also would be known as the ARPA fund. That's the American Rescue Plan funds that were, they were received, but they're included in deferred revenue until they're actually spent. So that is a new fund for the year, though. Starting on page, I think 36, it's just the footnotes to the financials. I'm not, of course, not going to go through all these, but the second one, the second footnote summarizes the significant accounting policies of the city. They, the city uses what's generally accepted accounting policies that other government entities uses, use. And I'm just going to go through a couple of notes, point out some highlights here. On page 47, there is a summary of the city's fixed assets, capital assets for the, for the year. For the governmental activities, overall, there was an addition of about four and a half million dollars. Majority of that was on the, there was a pump truck and some infrastructure with paving and sidewalk, and then Broadway Square renovations, where those were actually finalized during the year. On the, on the business type activities, an increase of about 8 million, mostly with doing with water line replacements, water plant upgrades, and those sorts of items. On page, starting on page 48, goes into these, into all the, you'd probably want to know about the retirement plans of the cities, the two retirement plans of the city and the county retirement plans that you participate in. All the actuarial assumptions that you would possibly want to read about, that is detailed, that is detailed in there, and it is a required part of the financials. But on page 61, it starts the long-term debt footnote, that you can see the activity during the year of the city's debt. At the bottom of page 61, governmental activities, the $11 million of the 2021 general obligation bonds were added during the year. The city was actually able to sell those at a premium and get an additional $1.8 million of funds on the sale of those bonds. Part of that was used during the year was to pay, was of course, to refinance the police station on that capital lease. On top of the next page, it summarizes the debt for, the debt activity for the business type activities, which is primarily the utility fund, of course. And the major one issued there was 11 and a half million dollars at the beginning of the year for the plan upgrades. Let's see, on page 69, I'll point out another little footnote that may be of interest. Footnote 14, it's on the risk management, but it provides a summary of the health insurance claims and activity during the year. Actual health insurance claims were down to about $2.3 million during the year over last year. And I think last year, there was even a decrease at that point. And I know that the city switched to Anthem right there at the beginning of the year, which I think helped with that significantly. Also with, I think there's still COVID issues, people not going to the doctor at that point. But the total claims for, health claims during the year went down over $2 million during the year. On pages 87 through 89, there is a detailed budget to actual for the general fund. On pages 87 through 89, there is a detailed budget actual for the General Fund. At the bottom of the page, total revenues exceeded budgeted amount of $5.5 million. Majority of that was the occupational license fees and business license fees. About midway through the page, you can see those were a little over $4 million, exceeded the budgeted amount.
Was some of that because of the extension as well from, did we not extend into the next fiscal year?
Yeah, I have both a no.
So some of that increase is actually just a carryover because it wasn't paid in the previous fiscal year? Am I saying that right?
It was in that process, yeah. One of our major employers, occupational.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it was one employer who's increased quite a bit during the year.
I think we know which one that is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we also point out that we actually budgeted pretty well also because we were very unsure what the revenue was.
Conservative estimate.
That's why there was a difference between, the actual increase from last year, I think, was about the 1.3 million, but the budget was lowered because you, you weren't sure about the expectations of what the year was actually going to be like last year, just the uncertainty.
That's been kind of the thing for two years now.
Yeah.
That's good, that's why I'm.
Yeah.
I hear antebellum horror stories from other communities that did not take the approach that we did in the last few years. You all know better than, you all know collectively how difficult that was, which was a personal decision to take. I think it's kind of, it's why we're at where we're at today. At least that's part of the story.
So on page 89, I will, I mentioned the transfer between the bus system. The actual, there was still a small transfer, about $17,000, but it wasn't near as what it was in the previous year. So, but compared to budget, you actually had a difference between budget actual, changing the fund balance was $18 million compared to what was originally expected. The only other item I'll point out, in case there's any confusion over it or any questions over, on page 101, it's the findings, the findings for the city that we had during the audit. There's only one. It was related to the CDBG program, which is essentially the majority of it's a carryover from last year on one contract that was signed during the previous year, but since it carried into this year, it was required to be included on this year's audit as well. There were a couple of other additional items that were also included on here, but they were smaller. The main reason this, the finding was in here was because that contract straddled the two years for the, why that was, that's Do you have any questions? I feel kind of, we threw it, so if I have any questions or concerns or anything I can address? Like I said, once again, I appreciate you having us out again this year and all the help that the Finance Department, everybody has offered. I mean, it's a big job. You can see, I mean, it's a thick report. There's a lot of work that goes into it from the city, from the city standpoint.
As always, we appreciate the Finance Department for the fine job they do in preparing this and giving us great guidance when we're doing our budget.
Unless the Mayor and Commissioners have anything else, which of course, please comment, but Mr. Workman, I want to thank you all. It's always a very professional product. It's always very thorough. As Commissioner stated, you know, finance sets us up for success on, you know, the information that we provide and the rest of the staff that they coordinate from the rest of the staff to hit this. We feel very comfortable. We like this process. I do personally like this process because it really, it confirms what we think we think about ourselves and that we are doing the right financial thing and that we're reporting accurately, et cetera. So thank you for the professionalism of you and your staff. It means a lot to us. Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're here to help. That's the way I, kind of the way I feel.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't have any questions.
All right. We thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We're moving on to public participation. You may call in now at 606-385-3220. 606-385-3220. Anyone with a comment or request may address the commission concerning matters related to city business, services, or personnel. Comments related to election issues or concerning personal disputes will not be allowed. Personal attacks, obscene, or threatening language will not be tolerated. Presentations are limited to five minutes. No action will be taken at this meeting. Those with comments are encouraged to use our inquiry form and forward it to the city clerk for distribution to the proper city department.
Do we wait? You want me to call?
Look, we have about a 90-second delay, so I'm timed in. About 20 more seconds to make sure it's live.
I feel like we need a theme song or something. I don't know if you all can hear, but there's a tick up here.
Yes. Yes, there is. It's kind of maddening.
When it's very quiet, that's all we can hear, is this just tick.
All right. We've given the public an ample opportunity to participate. At this time, no participation has been remedied by phone, so we move on to our old business or consent agenda, excuse me.
No old business, so on the consent agenda. Before reading the resolution, I would entertain a motion to remove item 16 from the consent agenda. That involves a property that we've just learned in the last 24 hours or so has been sold by the Master Commissioner. The back taxes have been paid, and we want to give the new owner opportunity to bring that up to code before any action is taken. So if someone is so inclined that we just move that item 16 be removed from the consent agenda.
Make a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have a resolution of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, adopting, authorizing and improving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda as amended for the regular meeting of the Board of City Commissioners of January 27, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Moving on to new business. First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 627th Street in the amount of $3,490 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item B, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 457 30th Street in the amount of $5,960 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
I move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item C, and before I read item C, this is the ordinance that would have awarded the contract for the same property that we just removed from the consent agenda. So because it's on our agenda, I'm going to read it, but I would request that we not have a motion and it'll fail for lack of a motion. Item C is first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 2414 Beach Street in the amount of $4,890 for the Department of Community and Economic All right. Here ain't no motion, and that fails for lack of a motion. Item D, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris at 2956 Hackworth Street in the amount of $8,450 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
I move. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item E, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 1828 Hickman Street in the amount of $5,250 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
I move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item F, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Bobby's Mulch for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 1532 McKnight Street in the amount of $5,650 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item G, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Lights Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 1632 Hilton Avenue in the amount of $21,000 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Lights Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris, 3108 Mason Street in the amount of $4,200 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item I, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Lights Enterprises, Inc., for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris, 2916 Moore Street in the amount of $7,400 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item J, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Womack Excavating LLC for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 3142 Baff Avenue in the amount of $8,200 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item K, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Womack Excavating LLC for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 3432 Grant Avenue in the amount of $3,200 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
Any discussion? I think this is a significant ordinance for us and looking forward to it.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item L, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Womack Excavating LLC for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 2800 Hilton Avenue in the amount of $3,200 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item M, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Womack Excavating LLC for the purchase of all labor, materials, equipment, and services for the demolition and removal of all debris of 956 Prospect Avenue in the amount of $8,200 for the Department of Community and Economic Development."
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item N, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Ashland and O'Rourke Wrecking Company for the demolition of the building located at 1401 Winchester Avenue in the amount of $2,434,000 for the Department of Engineering.
I moved. Second.
Another major one to see on our agenda today.
Can I just make a comment about, because I think that's the last one of the demolitions. Reading through those, it's like, oh, let's just tear everything down, tear everything down. And I'm glad to see that this is across all neighborhoods in ours. They're everywhere.
Yes.
And we're working to make sure that we take care of that everywhere, including one of our own.
Yes.
And, you know, I'm really looking forward to building back on this property and all the other properties where we have taken down properties.
I think it's amazing how far we've come. When we started discussion on this during budget talks, that we were all in agreement, that we had a common goal of cleaning up blight in our city and making way for nicer homes to be built and to make places safer to live. I mean, it's amazing to me because sometimes you say you want to do something and it languishes. But the department's got right on this. We have been moving so quickly on this, and it really touches my heart. I think everybody is so glad that we're undertaking this for the betterment of our city.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item O, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute an amendment number one to the agreement between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and HDR Engineering, Inc., for professional services for a cost of service study of rates for both the water and sewer systems, increasing the agreement amount by $15,400 for the Department of Utilities."
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, what's the reason for this pretty large increase here? I mean...
Commissioner, the question was why the increase for this contract.
Well, it's $15,000.
Yeah, $15,000 on the contract. With the recent analysis that we have from Strand in regards to the cost of the plant going from the mid 300, excuse me, mid 30 million cost to 59, this needs to be incorporated into that study so that, that was so significant, it changed the study that was in its final draft form. So this will correct that study and give us some solid recommendations to consider.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item P, first reading and approval of an ordinance, "An ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to submit the amended fiscal year 2021 grant application to the Federal Transit Administration on behalf of the Ashland Bus System for operating costs, preventive maintenance, paratransit service, maintenance, payroll, and capital expenditures, and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary for the implementation of this grant."
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item Q, reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled, "A municipal order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky, authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a grant application for funding for the hiring of three additional firefighters through the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant Program for the Ashland Fire Department, and if awarded, authorizing acceptance of the grant and further authorizing and directing the mayor to execute any and all other documents necessary regarding said grant."
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all we have on new business unless there's anything else.
Any other business, folks? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wait, are we going to meet in the morning?
It is an adjournment, but we have another called meeting in the morning to do second reading on...
All right.
Okay, second.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.
Are you going to the courthouse?
That's pretty darn good.
You going to the courthouse?
Yeah.
Four.
Bell.